Welcome again to the Candidates Forum sponsored by the League of Women Voters in Northwest Wayne County. This third part of our forum features the four candidates running in the August 7th primary for the position of the Sumter Township Board of Trustees. Three Democrats and one Republican are running. There are no Libertarian candidates. The three candidates running in the Democratic primary are Jay Bardell, Kit Dewire, and Antoine Jordan. There is one Republican candidate running in the primary, Tim Rush. Because he is the sole Republican candidate, Mr. Rush will advance automatically to the November election to compete against the winner of the Democratic primary. Even though he is running unopposed for his party's primary, we have invited him here tonight to share his views with you along with the other candidates. As before, each candidate is allowed a one minute for an opening statement, a one minute to respond to questions, and a one minute for a closing statement. Timers are seated right in front of you candidates, so they'll hold up cards as you approach 30 seconds, 15 seconds, and of course that dreaded stop card. We're going to start with Mr. Bardell. If you could please take your one minute, introduce yourself. Go ahead.
I'm Jay Bardell. I've lived in the township for 39 years. I've been a resident for 39 years, and I'd like to see Sumter grow. I'd like to see all of us prosper in Sumter. I'm glad to see that. First of all, I'm sorry, I'd like to thank the Women's League of Voters and all the residents of the township that are here watching and supporting this forum. So, 39 years I've been out here. In the last 10 years or so, I've been involved in a little bit of political. I've been in the Planning Commission, I've been on recreation, parking wrecks, and now I'm on the Southwestern Democratic Club as a trustee. And I'd like to be a trustee for the township. I think that we can all have great ideas, we can listen to them, and I'd be the voice of the people that would come and have our...
And thank you. Mr. Dewire, your opening statement, please.
Hi, my name is Kit Dewire, 18-year resident of Sumter Township. My educational background is I have a master's degree in gerontology and programs and services for seniors. I have a bachelor's degree in education as well as a planned program. I'm a former teacher of the Visionally Imperative Blind for 20 years. I am a business manager for a family-owned business. I do payroll, I do all the budgeting, and I'm really good at that. And I also do accounts receivable and payable. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jordan?
First and foremost, I would like to thank God for waking me up this morning and starting my way and closing my right mind with the full use of activity of my limbs to say that my name is Antoine Jordan. I've been a Sumter resident for the last 34 years, which has been my entire life. The only time that I've left is when I went to school at Central Michigan, where I obtained my Bachelor's of Science in Business Administration with a specialization in Human Resource Management. I also left again after I graduated there and went down to Georgia to get my master's degree, which is MBA with a specialization in Human Resource Management as well, when I graduated cum laude. I think that I am a little nervous, but I think that's good. I like to tell the truth. I also coached Rebelville High School, and I'm a JV basketball coach there, and head of fundraising, and I work with kids pretty much on a weekly basis, and that's the type of person that I am.
Thank you. Mr. Rush, your opening statement?
Thank you. Hello, everyone. My name is Tim Rush. I've lived in this wonderful township for the last 30 years. I'm a graduate of the National Institute of Technology and have an associate's degree in Electronic Engineering Technology and was class valedictorian. My career for the last 35 years has been working as a corporate and private security consultant and emergency management planner. In 2004, I was elected as trustee and served my term. My duties included liaison to the Police Department, liaison to the Planning Commission, Central Dispatch Board of Control for the Police Department, zoning board of appeals, and was just appointed to the Planning Commission. With my background and experience, when elected, I will hit the ground running for everyone in Sumter Township. Thank you.
Thank you. If you could bring the mic back down here. We're going to start with Mr. Bardell. He'll answer the first question. What special talents do you bring to be a qualified trustee?
Common sense. That's all we need, is common sense. We don't have to have a degree in anything, just use common sense. You don't have to be a rich man, you don't have to be a poor man. Just be all equal and have common sense.
Thank you. If you could pass the mic to Mr. Dewire. Same question?
Could you repeat it?
Sure. What special talents do you bring to be a qualified trustee?
I'm a great problem solver. I, like I said, I'm good with budgets. The overspending that's been going on in Sumter Township in the past 18 years since I've moved here is absolutely ridiculous. My background mostly is in seniors and the disabled, and the senior center is... The senior center is definitely in the toilet waiting to be flushed, and my seniors are treated very poorly, the disabled, and they have a very unsafe and unhealthy environment when they're traveling on our transportation here in Sumter.
Thank you. Mr. Jordan?
I would say people's skills. I believe that the role of a trustee, you have to learn to listen to the residents and act on behalf of them. I believe with the work experience that I have in HR, basically dealing with people on a day-to-day basis, and when you deal with people, you learn that everyone don't think or believe the same as you. So therefore, with that said, you have to learn to listen to other people's ideas and opinions and then try and formulate a centralized answer for what should happen, not based off of what this person said or that person said, but what the most common goal is among all the residents.
Thank you. Mr. Rush?
Yes, thank you. As previously stated, my experience in government as a formerly elected trustee is going to be very beneficial to hit the ground running. As I stated, my career being a security consultant, emergency management planner, I'm actually on the director's on-call staff in Washington County. And boy, some of the problems we have to solve, plan for, I bring all that to the table right from the get-go. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll start this next question with Mr. Dewire. There are different kinds of townships in Michigan. What's the difference between a law township and a charter township? Which kind is Sumter Township? And what is the difference in tax base? There are different kinds of townships in Michigan. What is the difference between a law township and a charter township? Which kind is Sumter? And what is the difference in tax base?
The law?
Law township and a charter township?
All right. I think the difference is, for instance, Van Buren is the charter township of Van Buren. I didn't look up this definition, but I think the difference is, is that Van Buren compared to Sumter, they have all kinds of businesses, and you know, they've got a school district there, and much, much bigger population, and not as rural as Sumter. That's what I think the difference is.
Thank you. Mr. Jordan?
I want to be honest, I do not know the difference within the townships. So with that said, you know, these are things that I'll be learning because I'm new. I'm not scared to tell people that I don't know the answer to a question. I think that sometimes people get caught up in trying to act as if they may have a resume that they don't. I am fresh water. I do not know a lot of things and a lot of different terms that may be asked here tonight, but I'm willing to sit here in front of all you people and tell you that I do not know all the right answers. But I am willing to learn different things that need to be learned to be a great trustee in the township. I think that that is the most important thing because there's going to be different things that, say, the gentleman to my left may understand and know better than I do, or to the right, she may understand or know better than I do. But what you have to understand is that moving forward, you have to be willing to learn new things.
Thank you. Mr. Rush?
Thank you. Boy, excellent question. And we never in Sumter Township want to become a charter township. What that does is basically takes power away from the people for millages and taxes. It's not huge, but there is that degree. And as far as I'm concerned, I would never endorse us becoming a charter township. The people should decide only if there's going to be any increases in taxes or millages, period. Thank you.
If you could pass that down to Mr. Bardell, so he can answer.
That's true. Sumter is a general law township, and what Tim said is exactly right about the charter township can pass without having to go to the people.
Thank you. Mr. Jordan, we'll start this next question with you. What would you do to ensure that meetings are civil, courteous, and productive, and promote unity?
I think that the way that meetings are structured, there's already a process for that to happen. We just might have to make sure that the process is running smoothly. There should be someone as a sergeant-at-arms that's enforcing that people are talking out of line or not, if the meeting is not being conducted in the proper manner. I believe that if you go by how it's structured, you shouldn't have that problem. But at times, I don't think that it's being ran that way. So we would need to make adjustments and then hold each other accountable to where the process is being corrected.
Thank you. Mr. Rush?
Yes, thank you. First off, I think, you know, the board should stick to protocols as far as when things are brought up at meetings. I mean, most of the stuff I've heard, it could have been solved before even got to the workshop. Robert's Rules of Order, I think that needs to be reinforced majorly at future township meetings, and I think things would go much, much smoother.
Thank you. Mr. Bardell?
Well, everybody always has to have an opinion on something, whatever the issue is. And some people get to talk and talk and talk, and some don't. I think that everybody ought to be treated equal in the meetings and get the same respect as anyone does. And I think the meetings, you gotta be able to agree to disagree without having to have a war going on.
Thank you. And Mr. Dewire?
Well, I think foremost, we need to remember that we're sitting on a board representing everybody, not just special interests, not your buds, not anything. Everybody in this township counts. And then I learned about the Robert's Law the other day when I was speaking to one of my friends that works at Wayne County in the assessors, and they're like, "Well, don't you follow that?" I didn't know. I don't know why we're not following that, but the past two board meetings I've gone to, it's like kindergartners throwing sand in each other's faces. It's ridiculous, it's no way to behave. I had kindergartners that acted older than this board.
Thank you. We'll start this next question with Mr. Rush. Those running for the Township Board are either Republican or Democrats. Please comment if partisan politics is an issue in township government.
Yeah, I do believe it is to a certain degree. I myself, I can work with anybody. If they've got a good idea, it's logical, and holds foresight for the township's future. Again, I can work with anybody, but yes, I believe it is very partisan. Thank you.
Thank you. And next we have Mr. Bardell?
I believe that any party, Republican, Libertarian, any of them, can all work together. They all have good ideas. You don't have to be all of ones to have good ideas. Everybody in our community has different ideas. Some have good ideas, some have bad ideas. But if they come out and you discuss them, you all sit down, come to consensus to it, and promote the good ideas, that's what we need.
Thank you. Mr. Dewire?
Could you repeat it?
I'm sorry? Could you repeat it? Yes. Those running for the Township Board are either Republican or Democrats. Please comment if partisan politics is an issue in township government.
I don't know if it is or not. I think that, well, I know we're all individuals. Everybody's got a great idea. Just have to put our listening ears on and listen to everybody. There's no reason not to listen to an individual. If it's important to them, it's important to me. And that's the difference. I have no idea what the politics are in this township. I'm not a politician. I go to as few board meetings as I have to because I don't recognize any good stuff coming out of the board meetings.
Thank you. Mr. Jordan?
I think that working together, Democrats or Republicans, should be easy. I know it's not, because people have different views, and different people may believe different things. But when you are capable of listening to someone that has a different view, then you sometimes, it leads to something better than maybe what you thought was the right way to go. I think with that, if you learn how to work together, instead of saying, "I'm a Republican, and this is how I believe, I'm a Democrat, this is how I believe," that there will be a middle or a common ground because there's not all Republicans out here, there's not all Democrats out here. There's different views on both sides of the table, where everybody should be heard because we're a community and not a dictatorship.
Thank you. Mr. Bardell, we'll start this next question with you. Do you have a personal financial interest in any of the companies that the township has contracts with? If so, how do you avoid a conflict of interest and avoid any appearance of impropriety?
I don't have any, so I can't answer that question.
Okay. Mr. Dewire?
I have zero. Nobody in my family, none of my friends have businesses here, so I don't have any.
Mr. Jordan?
Can you repeat the question, please?
Do you have a personal financial interest in any of the companies that the township has contracts with? If so, how do you avoid a conflict of interest and avoid any appearance of impropriety?
I personally don't have any family that have contracts with the township, but just to speak figuratively, I believe that sometimes you may, or should, refrain from voting on certain things if you are related or if you do have an interest in a vote that is going on. There's other board members there, and they're waiting to carry the vote for things that you may be, or someone else may think that you may be impartial to.
Thank you. Mr. Rush?
Thank you. I personally don't have any conflicts of interest with any companies or contracts that are established in Sumter Township. If I did and was a board member, how I would address it is I would personally, even before the workshop or meetings, just write a letter, just notifying everybody on the board and making sure that they understood this is why I'm going to recuse myself from the vote or any discussion on those issues. That's if I had conflict of interest. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll start this next question with Mr. Dewire. Many of you have been in the community or the community's political field for a long time now. Have you done anything to secure and encourage new generations of leaders in our community?
No, I haven't. There's no after-school programs here. I teach children after school, children at RIS. There's nothing like that going on in Sumter. Mrs. Barnes addressed that when she was up here speaking. We need that just immensely. We need to bring grandmas and grandpas in and help the children learn to read better and how to play together and get along. I mean, we have all this space, and nothing gets used, and nobody gets to come and have fun and learn. And I would be willing to do that.
Thank you. Mr. Jordan? Many of you have been in the community or in the community's political field for a long time now. What have you done or what will you do to secure and encourage new generations of leaders in our community?
Okay. So I believe, I would have to speak figuratively again because I haven't been in politics for a long time in Sumter. But what I would do is try and set up different types of programs so where you can educate young individuals on how the actual township works. So me being 34 years old, having a master's degree in all these things, I still don't understand how Sumter Township works in and out. It's not that people aren't willing to understand the workings, it's that there's nothing available for us other than going to a board meeting. And sometimes that may or may not present the right image to moving forward and having the young generation be available to come in and go into politics. And furthermore, this was one thing that scared me because, you know, some of the meetings that I went to, I was looking at different things that was going on. And so I was asking questions and doing a little research, and I was thinking that maybe, you know, if we had a little more education to our younger individuals that could get involved, that they would be more likely to be involved.
Thank you. Mr. Rush?
Yes. In Sumter Township, you've got to have a thick skin to be in politics. There's no doubt about that. Anybody that I run into that could be a potential future candidate, I try to encourage. You know, because of the way some things go and the partisanship, you know, a lot of people are scared. They don't want to be put through the meat grinder, so to speak. I can tell you, there's somebody sitting in the audience tonight I was introduced to maybe five, six months ago. He's a candidate, and I'll tell you, it's just amazing when you reach out to people, work with them, talk with them, encourage them. You know, we're going to need leaders down the road. And yeah, I do my best whenever I'm out about talking to anybody. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Bardell?
I invite people to come to board meetings. Sometimes they do, a lot of times they don't. Just try to get even the young people to come out and see how board meetings are presented, how they would do if they were sitting on the board, or even if they're sitting in the audience, to see how it's done, how board meetings are conducted. And we need to have high schoolers come to it. We need to solicit for high schoolers to come to board meetings, get into politics. Because they're going to be our future generations. They're going to be the people that are going to be living in Sumter Township when we're six feet under.
Thank you. We'll start this next question with Mr. Jordan. As a candidate, where do you stand on medical marijuana commercial growers in our township?
This is a very good question. I believe in medical marijuana. I afford medical marijuana because I've educated myself year after year, and I've been to different township meetings, not just Sumter Township, but probably, I would say, 10 different townships within Michigan. I think that commercializing medical marijuana would centralize the actual medical marijuana growth, and instead of having it in mom-and-pop shops, you would have more of a central location that can be monitored by the police better if that's the need be, and we can keep it out of our neighborhoods.
Thank you. Mr. Rush?
Yes. I voted personally for medical marijuana when it was on the ballot. I've been a very vocal person as far as the 23 proposed grow sites. I am completely against them. The reports I've read, my background as a security consultant in dealing with these facilities, trying to secure them, we don't need that in our township. I would be open. We have an industrial section in the northwest corner of the township. Most of the places that commercially grow are not outdoors. They're in buildings. You know, I don't know the specifics about the proposed sites that were going to be down here, but you know, maybe be open to one or two up there. Other than that, I'm completely opposed to these open grow sites. They're nothing but trouble. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bardell?
Can you repeat the question, please?
Sure. As a candidate, where do you stand on medical marijuana commercial growers in our township?
Commercial growers, depending on how many there was. If we only had three or four, I'm all for it. And if it's for the right reason, I'm for it. For people that are medically that need it, that pain medicine doesn't work for. I've had family members that had to smoke it. I've never smoked it in my life to ease their pain before they died. I've had friends that used it before they died. It was the only thing that would ease their pain. Yeah, I'm there.
Thank you. Mr. Dewire?
Yes. I've been a caregiver for many, too many family members who had end-of-life diseases. And not once, not one time ever, did their physicians ever suggest marijuana to them for pain relief or any other relief. Everything I've read about it, everything I've been told about it, nothing. I've not had one pharmacist, scientist, or doctor tell me that it's going to do anything for anybody. But just last week, I almost lost a friend to a heart attack, a horrible widow maker. And the only thing that eases his pain from them, tearing him open during the surgery, is smoking marijuana. So if it's used like that, I don't want it in my community. I don't want it grown in my community. But I can't say to my best friend, "If that works for you, you can."
Thank you. Mr. Rush, we'll start this next question with you. What are your ideas to bring new businesses to our community?
Well, first off, probably better relationships with the Chamber of Commerce, actively promoting our northern industrial section. I haven't looked at the, I'm actually just reviewing, just being pointed on the Planning Commission. We had some really good ideas in the past for our commercial corners like down Sumter Township Road that never really came to fruition. I'd like to see if those could be revitalized. You know, nothing big, but you know, your nice little corner shops, that type of thing, keep it rural, the atmosphere. But mainly, just getting with the Chamber of Commerce. I think that would be a real good step to, you know, kind of bolster that up a little bit.
Thank you. Mr. Bardell, same question?
Well, I think that the master plan shows where commercial is and industrial is, and we need to, even we have property, large acreage that the township owns, that we can get revenues off of it. How to get the businesses to come in? We have to go out and welcome them to our community, want them to come to our community. How to get them here? We've got to offer them. We have to give them tax payments to get in here. Can we afford that?
Mr. Dewire?
Well, when I worked for my family business, we were just tiny. It was my two brothers, myself, and my dad. And as I aged, I was able to bring other companies in. It was a machine-removing company. It put presses in and out of factories. We used cranes. We just had all kinds of heavy equipment. And I put other companies in touch with my company and we grew and we did bigger shop moves. I think if we just start reaching out to people and making it open borders, so to speak, because Sumter is a lovely place to have a business and to live.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan.
First off, just like anything else, you have to market yourself. You have to go out and solicit business. You have to figure out what's good for our township. Once we figure out what's good for our township, we have to actively go out and find the businesses that are willing to come. I've talked to someone that owns a large piece of property. He wants someone or a company like Toyota to come in. I think that Bardell made a good statement about some type of tax credit or something along those lines to actually get the company in here to sign some type of deal with somebody that owns some land or, you know, because they're not going to come and spend a billion dollars in infrastructure and not sign fifty or a hundred-year deal. So, if you give them a tax break upfront, we can recruit some money on the end. Also, moving forward, I would like to say that one of my main goals is to at least get Clover, which is for baseball diamonds, in one location. And I know I can actively promote having that as a youth program and business that generates money for our township.
Thank you. Mr. Bardell, we'll start this next question with you. What have you done for the township of which you are most proud?
I didn't think Tim answered that last question.
I'm sorry?
Did Tim answer that last question?
Yes, you answered. We started with you.
Yes.
Sure. What have you done for the township of which you are most proud?
Being Santa Claus for the kids. Being Santa Claus for the kids. Year after year, it's a wonderful, wonderful, warming in your heart to listen to them little children.
Thank you, Mr. Wire.
Well, I was the photographer for my husband's videography business in Sumter for twelve years. But I think I'm most proud because working at the senior center, doing volunteer work there, bringing my seniors home with me, just reaching out to everyone, the children, like Jay said about being Santa Claus. The children's parties were so awesome. The senior party is wonderful at Christmas time as well. It's so easy to just find things to do in Sumter for anybody. Everybody likes a smiling face. Everyone likes a hand up. So, whatever it takes, that's what I'm going to do.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan.
I would say the thing that I'm most proud of that I've done for Sumter Township is approximately five years ago, I dedicated close to thirty to forty hours of my time in just spiritualism. Church and its army on Martinsville Road at their wreck building and started different programs for the youth to come in, different basketball programs. We also purchased some new technology for, it's called Vertamax, and individuals from Beagle High School as well as Canton and a couple other high schools. They came out and we were able to give them some training and different things like that for free. That lasted for probably about six to nine months where I was working with them on a day-to-day basis of trying to generate business for the church as well as, you know, create different opportunities for our kids.
Thank you. Mr. Rush?
Yes, thank you. I would have to say for me, it would be when I was on the Board of Trustees. And again, my background is emergency management planner, working with the board to upgrade a few things like the sirens system. We were just getting an early start on that early warning system. And look at it now, the work I put in on that, the upgrade and the way we activated it. And I mean, we've got an excellent system now. We're far ahead of a lot of communities in that area. I think another, one other thing that goes with that would be the Sumter Township Police Department. When I was liaison, Chief Luca, remember, we got most of the officers to go down to Washtenaw County Emergency Management and go through their Skyworm program for spotting severe weather. And the guys just loved it. So, yeah, those are two things that I would say I've done. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wire, we'll start this next question with you. What do you see as the duties of a trustee?
Well, I think first of all, just listen. Like I said, the past two board meetings I went to, nobody's listening, everyone's screaming, just, you know, it's all about them. And that is, I'm a wonderful listener, I'm a problem solver, and that will be my goal is just listen and try to keep people from arguing and just put in some problem-solving techniques, you know, easy, easy peasy.
Thank you. Mr. Jordan?
As a trustee, my number-one job and goal is to entrust the residents of the township and to make sure that I am voting based on what they believe, not necessarily what I believe. I also, as a trustee, would need to make sure that our clerk, our treasurer, and supervisor is balancing the budget correctly.
Mr. Rush?
Yeah, well, the duties of a trustee are very well stated in MCL law. It is for, it is the judiciary health of the township. We are the oversight. Trustees traditionally will get appointed to other positions, maybe police liaison, the fire department, Planning Commission, zoning board of appeals, parks and rec. But the main duty of a trustee is oversight, the judiciary health of the township.
Thank you. Mr. Bardell?
Tim is exactly right what he said. But also, you're the vote on all the issues and matters that retain that, every item that comes in front of the board. But most of all, it's to listen to the people and like Anton said, be whatever they, the most, the majority, the majority of the people want is what you vote on.
Thank you. We'll begin this next question with Mr. Jordan. What do you think is the biggest challenge the township faces and what is your plan to fix it?
I think the biggest challenge that the township faces at this point in time is working together. I think that there has been a division based off maybe one or two issues that they've had. And I think that they need to get back or we as a community need to get back on track and voting on single issues at the time and not going back to, okay, they voted this way, so I'm going to vote this way or what may happen. I think that that is the biggest issue that we're having currently and that we need to go back to. If this is a good idea, no matter who presents it, it's a good idea. If this is a bad idea, no matter who presents it, this is a bad idea. That's where I'm at.
Thank you, Mr. Rush.
Yeah, right now, the township is enjoying a very nice revenue stream from the Carleton Farms landfill. This revenue is not going to continue forever. And we need to be, again, this was kind of relating to another question earlier, enticing small business and light industrial in our proper zoning areas to compensate for that so our township citizens don't burden, you know, our burden with additional village and, you know, tax increases. Something that a lot of people really don't know and don't talk about is our water infrastructure. Criteria on some of the feed lines goes back to like the late fifties. And, you know, if any of these fail or we don't have it covered, I mean, it could just be a catastrophe. And that's something I'd like to bring up and at least do some research on with the board.
Thank you. Mr. Bardell?
Repeat the question, please.
What do you think is the biggest challenge the township faces and what is your plan to fix it?
Biggest plan that, or the biggest challenge that the township's got is probably the water, the high water tables that we have out here that we need to get ditches, green dug and soil. Don't have swampland. And I think that the biggest thing I do is I go down to Wayne County, although I know I go down to Wayne County, the director of commission had us, to see what kind of grants are, if we could get a crew out here to keep cleaning ditches instead of one every three years. We have, I've lived on the O L Road. Our ditch was cleaned twelve years ago and it's already filled back up. You go down three-quarters of a mile from us, it runs uphill, is never able to run down to the Desro drain. So, it lays right in the same spot. So, we need to get to Wayne County and see if they come out and take care of us. It's exactly what we need to do. Or that's exactly what I want to do.
Thank you. And Mr. Wire?
So, last year, I lived here seventeen years last year, and it took me seventeen years to get Wayne County to come out. My yard was flooded. It was like a lake. All we needed was a pier. And everyone's like, oh, you're going to have to call this place and that place. And I thought, you know what? I used to call Kevin McNamara for everything as commissioner. So, I called Joe, or Al. And I spoke with Heather over there and I explained to her that these people said that I was going to have to call three and four days a week in order to get them out. Well, I have so many more things to do other than that. And I told her that. So, she called over there and my husband and I weren't home and they were there the next day cleaning it up. So, that's number one. Wayne County is horrible. And the other thing is I've got three certificates and grant writing. Jay brought up getting grants. It's easy. There are people out there just want to give you a ton of money and take care of things.
Thank you. Mr. Rush, this next question will start with you. I have attended, and this is not me, this is one of the audience members. I have attended several meetings and during open floor, some speakers talk much longer than three minutes and others get shut down. Will you treat all residents by the same rules?
Well, typically, the township supervisor is in control of that at the board meetings. Again, we should be following Robert's Rules of Order exclusively. And, you know, some people go over, some people talk shorter, you know, that is somewhat of an issue in the township. Everybody should be held to the same standards as far as time limits.
Thank you. Mr. Bardell?
I believe time limits should be obeyed and they should be, they should be heard. The people should be heard, to what they're saying, equally. They should be heard equally, no matter who we are. If you're the best buds or the worst enemies, you still should get the same amount of time and have the same respect as we have to give the board member, the people, the audience has to give the board members. They deserve the same respect.
Mr. Wire?
Everyone deserves the same respect if they come up and, everybody's not a public speaker, everyone's not a former teacher, rabbi. Give the people the time they deserve. They're losing their train of thought because they're nervous. Make it equal, you know? If it's three minutes, then it's three minutes. And apologize to the person. But everyone should get the same time limit.
And Mr. Jordan?
I think that I agree with some of my left, basically you need to follow the rules and if there's a minute time limit, that's what it needs to be because then you have other issues that come up down the road. That's a very straightforward question, very straightforward answer.
Thank you. We've been able to ask over a dozen questions. Thank you for the audience. We're going to start our closing statements with Mr. Rush. If you could give us a one-minute closing statement.
Thank you. I could promote paths of change in Sumter Township by utilizing my problem-solving abilities that I've acquired through education and my life experience. For Sumter Township to overcome the challenges in the future, it should not be the officials that make the critical decisions alone. The people of the community also need to be involved. I can work with anyone's ideas on the board or from the community as long as their ideas are backed up with some foresight and planning for Sumter Township's future. We all have a vested interest in our future. Sumter Township is our home and together we can make it the finest township in Wayne County. Again, with my background and experience, when elected, I can hit the ground running. God bless the USA and God bless Sumter Township, my home and your home. Thank you.
Mr. Jordan?
In closing, I would just like to say, thank you guys for inviting me out. Thank you, community, for giving me the opportunity to be here. I also would like to say that my number-one goal is moving forward if, or when elected. I would like to develop some youth programs as well as take care of our seniors. We need to make sure that our future is taken care of as well as the individuals that's been here for the longest. I believe that if we focus on those two things, everyone in the middle will get along just fine. I believe that I would just like to see, moving forward, our board work together more. I also would like to see people propose ideas that is physically responsible as well as something that we can vote on and get some good business in here so our kids don't mind staying here.
Thank you. Mr. Wire?
When I'm elected, I would like to work with this gentleman and with our youth because with my background in teaching special needs children, I believe that we could bring a program right here in this gymnasium. You know, parents come in, know us, drop their children off and do great things for our youth as well as for our elderly and our special needs people. Thank you.
Mr. Bardell?
Again, thanks. Thank you for coming out. I'm not a politician. I don't ever want to be a career politician, but I do like, I would like to be a politician for the next two years. We have a lot of, I have brought a lot of good ideas to the township which we've used. They've used them at the board meetings and we used them at the planning commission. I'm not, like I said, I'm not a politician, but I do have a lot of common sense. And that's what we need, and the common sense, it doesn't, you don't have to be an Einstein to be a board member. Just common sense, because every one of us got it. Thank you.
We thank the Sumter Township trustee candidates and all the candidates for their willingness to serve the public and to the audience for such thoughtful questions. We also are grateful to Sumter Township for allowing us to use their facility for the forum tonight. Our forum has been videotaped and can be viewed on our website, lwnorthwestwayne.org, beginning around July 23rd. So, for your neighbors who have not been able to join you tonight, please let them know they can watch if Indians entire team, the three sections, starting next week. Besides considering the candidates featured in tonight's forum, we urge voters to review the responses of all the candidates on their ballot at our online voter guide, vote411.org. It can also be accessed from our website. As Angela mentioned earlier, there's a bookmark out there with both of those websites so you don't even have to write it down. Primary election day is August 7th and the polls are open from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Remember that you must choose to vote for candidates in one party only. If you choose candidates in more than one party in the primary, your ballot will not be counted. Of course, this is not the case in the November election where you can vote for candidates in multiple parties. If you vote in person on election day, you will be asked for a picture ID. But if you do not have a picture ID or don't have it with you, you can still vote by signing an affidavit of identity. Voting in a primary election is just as important as voting in a general election. We would urge you all to be participants in our democracy by making educated choices in the primary election. This concludes our forum for this evening. Thank you for coming. Thank you for coming. Thank you.